Welcome to the San Ramon Valley Democratic Club. My name is Brody Hill. I serve as president. And I'm here with Rick Adler, our vice president, and Cecilia Manalga, our board member and Zoom administrator. We also have other board members in other key positions such as treasurer and membership chair. Our membership chair is critical. Providing outreach to all of our members. When you join the club, the membership chair sends a welcoming email, letting them, letting people know about how they can become involved with our club. The membership chair also keeps a huge database of all our members and email addresses, phone numbers and street addresses. It's critical. And why am I telling you this? Because we have a wonderful membership chair. Stuart Winter. He's a delight to talk to because he has an intriguing English accent. And he created and maintains the most wonderful Excel spreadsheets for our club. And so tonight we want to award him with our volunteer of the year award. I don't know. Can you see this? So thank you so much, Stuart, for all that you do. We really appreciate you and I will deliver this award. So that you can have it. Thank you so much for being our volunteer of the year. And so now we're going to move on because you know, we have an election November 8. And we're going to be voting for a US Senator or our congressperson for Congressional District 10, our Assemblyperson and our statewide officers. That means our governor and treasurer and controller and our Board of Equalization District 2. The California Democratic Party endorsed and we also support Alex Padilla as Senator. Mark DeSonia is our Congress member. Rebecca Bauer Kahn is our Assemblymember. And Sally Lieber for Board of Equalization District 2. And hopefully Cecilia is putting this in chat. Please look in chat for the link to the endorsements of the California Democratic Party for the November election. And of course, we will also place these endorsements in our San Ramon Valley Democratic Club emails. There's other, other county and local elections for Board of Education, School Board and County Clerk Recorder. And we will be highlight these elections in our meetings. Tonight, we will have the candidates, the candidate for the Board of Education in our district speak. And we also have candidates for the San Ramon Valley Unified School Board speak. Next month, we will have the two candidates for Clerk Recorder speak. And let me remind you that our last meeting, we endorsed a candidate for San Ramon City Council District 2. She is Sarah Lashinlow. And we will put her contact information in chat so that you can contact her and help her with her campaign. Remember, her opponent is a Republican. So her, her website is in chat, saraforcouncil.com. She, she has a small district in San Ramon. She really needs people to rock their neighborhoods. I hope you can help her. And tonight, we endorse Sabina Zaffer from Mayor of San Ramon. I'm certain you know Sabina. She serves on the city council. We've endorsed her years ago. And her website is also in chat, sabinazaffer.org. So hopefully you can get involved in their campaigns. Um, another request I have is that I wish there was someone here that wanted to volunteer to be Chair of our club's Legislative Committee. There's a great deal of important information at the state and federal level. And we need someone to organize it and let us know the important legislation coming up. So please send an email to president@srvdems.org if you're interested or want more information. Okay, so let me remind you of Zoom etiquette. You will be, you're muted right now with the candidate speaking. And after the candidate is finished, if you would like to ask a question, please go down to the bottom of your Zoom screen. You will see reactions. Click it and then click Raise Your Hand. We will call on you when it's your turn to ask a question and only one question, no follow-up questions. So thank you. Um, our first speaker, Rachel Hurd, are you here in our, in our meeting? I think you are. You can unmute yourself. Rachel Hurd will be our first speaker. She was elected as trustee to the San Ramon Valley Unified School District in November 2006. And she serves as the Traffics Board of Directors. Maybe she'll explain that. And is a board liaison to the Special Education Community Advisory Committee. And the district's negotiating team, the district's Climate Committee. And the San Ramon Valley Council PTA. She does a lot. So thank you, Rachel, for being here. She doesn't have an opponent. She did, but that opponent dropped out. But I wanted to hear, I wanted you to hear about what, what she does on this, on the council, on the board. So thank you, Rachel, for being here.
Thank you for having me. It's, it's been a while since I've come to one of your meetings and I've always enjoyed them, the times that I've come. Um, thank you for the introduction, Brody. I came to this work as an involved parent and I just got more and more involved largely, you know, based on the needs of my family and just my involvement at Country Club Elementary School. And then that grew into more involvement in the council level of PTA. And I became the president in 2003, four, and then became active on some district committees. And I was active or participated in Leadership San Ramon Valley, which is a community engagement and leadership development program for new and emerging leaders. And completed that and learned a ton and was approached by some board members and because there was going to be an opening and I ran and I just kind of dove in. It was kind of a natural extension of a lot of the work I was already doing. I was very active in building community in our schools, but also in the actual education aspects of it. I was very involved in site council. And that was right around the time when No Child Left Behind was coming into play. And while that law has been often maligned, there was one really positive piece of it. And it was that it was holding schools accountable for the kids who weren't being successful in school. And for the first time that I had seen it, site councils were actually really focused on those kids that, that weren't, you know, weren't cutting it, weren't making standard. And it made schools pay attention. And given that two of my own children struggle with dyslexia, that was very much a priority to me that our public education system help everyone, not just the kids that could learn, you know, in spite of the, the good instruction or whether the instruction was good or not. And so that their dyslexia was what got me into the special needs world. And then I learned all about, you know, all the other kinds of, of issues that kids struggle with in school. Autism was blooming then and the district was having a lot of issues with that too. So while I don't think I'm a single issue candidate at all, I never have been. Having kids who struggle in school definitely shapes your lens about education differently than than, than when school's easy for your kids. School was pretty straightforward for me. I worked hard, but it came easily. And so it was kind of a surprise when you have kids that, that just don't get it the first time. So that's the background there. I just think it kind of informs who I've always been as a school board member, very involved in lots of committees, involved with lots of constituents because I'm serving with them, you know, right next to them. I've been part of the San Ramon Valley Council of PTAs since 2001 and I still am. And those are kind of my people. And I think they're good folks to talk to, to have a real sense of what is happening in our schools besides what people who come to the board meeting tell us about. So I've been on for a long time, 16 years, four terms. This is a long time. Some people may wonder, hey, aren't you done yet? And I'm, I'm really not. And, and part of it is that there's always room for improvement. But I'm also very committed to the strategic directions that the district started working on during the pandemic and is now, you know, two years into, to working on them. Our, our key priorities are deep learning and innovation, which includes kids learning foundational schools, skills, but it includes taking learning to the next level to keep kids engaged to think about beyond college, what they want to do with their lives so that focus isn't only on college. And so that they're really committing to being lifelong learners. We also are committed to another direction is equity. And another is social emotional learning. And so those two together create the environment or the learning conditions for the deep learning to happen. And then the other three areas are really just part of the foundation of the district. There's shared leadership and financial stewardship and the sixth one is escaping me, but I believe it's related to customer service and responsiveness. So I just feel like I'm not done yet. So that's why I wanted to stay on another term. And that's enough of an introduction. Brody said she'd like me to take questions.
Yeah, um, you've, you've spoken a long time and you really want to get to our candidates who, who, who do have your, your, your opponent dropped out, right? But, but do we have any pressing questions for Rachel? Raise your hand.
I don't think I see.
Actually, Ellis just asked one about. Ellis, do you want to ask your question? Let me unmute you. Sorry. There you go.
Hey, um, Rachel, uh, thank you for coming and speaking to the club. You probably heard our last speaker talking about Christian nationalism and its attack on the educational system of the country. Has it been attacked? Or have you seen anything of what she was talking about at the San Ramon Valley Unified School District?
Yes, we have.
Tell us, tell us more.
Well, and I, I need to, to say, I didn't hear the whole presentation. I heard about the last five minutes or so. But we were in constant attack all through the pandemic with. You can't hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, Ellis was, Ellis was touching his ears. I thought he was communicating with me. All through, all through the, the pandemic with the Zoom meetings, we had lots and lots of participation. I don't know if at that point I would consider it, you know, Christian attack, but it was very much anti-science, anti, anti everything, right? Related to masking, kids being out of school, very anti-union. It was ugly and it was ugly for like two years straight. More recently, characters that you probably are familiar with in our district who are very homophobic and now they have attacked the transgender needs of our students. And they are at our meetings, pretty much every meeting, coming and talking at public comment and also talking on particular items when they can work it in. Anytime we're approving books, they're protesting the books. And, and basically the whole equity initiative, they are fighting. They keep saying, get back to basics. Why are you talking about this stuff? You're, you're making our kids feel guilty. And when you talk to the kids, that's not what at least the majority of them are telling us. They think this is important work.
Thank you, Rachel. Um, we're going to move on now to another school board member, Susanna Ordway. Susanna is a current member of the board and she has a unique perspective that allows to make tough decisions. And she will continue to emphasize the importance of academic excellence while expanding opportunities for all. Susanna, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, thank you, Brody. And thank you to the club inviting me as well. Yes, this is actually my fourth year on the board. So I've kind of, you know, don't quite have as, as much experience as Rachel, but you know, been, been on the board for a while now. I've been a resident actually in San Ramon and San Ramon Valley for, gosh, since 1994. And of course, my own children went through the school district. And in fact, I have a pretty large family and I have relatives, including kids who are actually at a TK, so elementary level, a middle school level and high school level currently. And we'll probably be for a bit. The unique perspective that I talked about, right? We had, had given in my introduction is actually that not only have I been a parent and, and like Rachel, really love and are involved, I'm involved with the PTA, the Council of PTAs and, and different levels of PTA work. But also because I've actually been employee of this school district. I was a classified employee for, first actually contracted with the school district for about three, four years and then an employee, classified employee for about seven years, over seven years. And at elementary school where actually I was the art instructor and I would have my art cart going into each classroom. So I work with actually at Trink Creek's Elementary. So I worked in every classroom, including the special education classes. So I saw what, you know, the, the, the benefits and challenges that the teachers have, that the students have. So so that kind of a, a, a different perspective, right? And I actually now, um, full time, my, my day job or evening job, actually, after school, evening and weekend job of working with students and their families to kind of, as a college planning advisor, so kind of help them navigate the complicated now process of entering into higher ed, which I think all of us here remember as being a lot more, a lot more, less complicated. It was a lot simpler, I think, when we were, when we were doing this. So that's kind of my, my background and my perspective. And as well as you, you can see, I'm the first and only Asian American on the board. And I bring that and my, my culture perspective also within education because not only am I kind of, I, I know about, of course, Chinese, I'm Chinese, Chinese culture, but I work with a lot of families who are Indian. So a little more broadly, Asian, bringing my perspective for that to the school board. And, and certain, you know, there are certain, I'm sure, assumptions on Asian American students and how you know, well or not well they do in certain things. And that as well as the, again, I don't see education as just, or I don't see K through 12 and then college as like separate. I see K through 12 as a great foundation in order to bring it through to higher ed and college and through to career, right? So that's when I say I have a unique perspective. I have a very big, broad perspective that I can contribute to our board and our school district.
Thank you. Do we have any quick questions for Susanna? I'd like to hear from other speakers. Okay, let me introduce Jerome, Jerome Pendel. He's running for District 1. He is an Alamo resident and parent and a proud product of the San Ramon Valley Unified School District. He is an attorney right now and a counselor for business in the construction industry. He has served as Chair of the San Ramon Valley Unified School District Facilities Bond Oversight and Advisory Committee from 2016 to 2020. Yeah. And he is, he's proud to have the support of trustee Laura Bratt and is endorsed by the local Teachers Union, Servia. His website is in chat, jeronependel.com. Jerome, thank you for being here.
Thank you so much, Brody. And it's really great to see quite a few familiar faces. Who it would seem, since the pandemic, I haven't seen many of you in person, but I have seen plenty of you on Zoom screens before. I, I did just want to say, I got the chance to work with Susanna when she joined the board and was the liaison to our Facilities Oversight Committee. And I saw the brave work she did as our school board president during the pandemic, getting some real fire from the audience. And I just have to say, I know you aren't passing out awards, but that deserves some real, it took some real great courage and efforts on her part. So on to me. The reason I'm running is I really want to give back to the school district that made me who I am today. My wife and I are both products of this school district. Our son, when he is old enough, and you might hear him in the background while I'm talking, will be a student in this for probably close to the next two decades. I have a niece who's a kindergartner at Rancho Romero, where I went to elementary school. I love our schools and their traditions of excellence. And I know we have to build on them. One of the things, and you've kind of seen some of it tonight, is our district now elects trustees by trustee area. One of the things that I really emphasize though, when I talk to voters and I talk to people is that even though our district splits the voters up, that doesn't mean the responsibilities that trustees have for all of our schools and ensuring all of them receive the equity and fair treatment and our students feel welcome at all campuses changes. In fact, it becomes a greater responsibility for all trustees to maintain steadfast with that mission. To that end, as Brody mentioned, I'm, I'm very proud to have the support of the San Ramon Valley Education Association as well as, I think he's here tonight, trustee Ken Mintz and trustee Laura Bratt. I also recently received the endorsement of one of our community college trustees, Andy Lee. And I love working with Andy, the enthusiasm and great work that he does on our community college board is exactly the type of partnerships that we as trustees have to continue to strengthen and build. With that, I want to leave as much time as possible for questions from any of you. And I'm really excited to hear from some of the other candidates speaking after me. So thanks so much.
Um, are there any questions? If not, we have questions. Our board has questions. Okay, let me ask one of those. What do you, as a board member, what will be your top three budget priorities?
So the three budget priorities that, one of the things I, I've heard, and it's not an original statement. It's something I heard our former Assemblymember Joan Buchanan say a lot of. A budget has to be a reflection of values. And I think that's so important at the school board level. One of the challenges our district faces is we do have some modest to increasing declining enrollment. Some of that could fluctuate in the years to come as, as things like universal pre-K are instituted. But the, the reality is you have to, within the confines of that, ensure that you meet students where they are and receive all the resources they have. One of the things we have to do is we know that other school districts in our area kind of know the San Ramon Valley Unified School District formula, retaining great teachers and making them feel and belonging. So I want to make sure that we continue to institute budgetary policies that recruit and retain the best teachers in our district. But also at the same time, ensure that our kids in the classroom receive the resources they need to succeed, no matter what stage they're at and no matter what their needs are. Additionally, uh, you know, one of the things that I think it's, the word that gets bounced around a lot about equity is that I think it means a whole bunch of different things in the education context that get lost when it's then bounced around in the media and other places. Equity really comes down to a thing that I think all students want, which, and you, as parents, you want for your child, which is competency in their studies, but also growth, growth and passion about what they're learning. And in focusing on equity, one of the things we have to do is ensure that our school environments remain welcoming to students, no matter what their diverse backgrounds are and what their needs are. So that comes at the budget level. The work that's being done with equity counselors, I think is great. And needs to be strengthened. The other thing, and this is more of a state issue, but it's one that hopefully school board members can unite and work behind is I think the universal free meal program is essential and great to continue. Cause I think it really helps all kids feel like they belong.
Thank you. You may have touched on some of our other questions, but let me, let me ask them anyway. Let's see. How would, how, how would you, or what would your plan be to address identified systemic racism in our school district? First of all, I should ask, do you think there is systemic racism in your school district? And are there programs that can be added to the curriculum to strengthen student understanding of historic racism and the legal remedies that are in place to address it?
So I'm going to answer the first part of your question or the last part, I think, first in the sense that yes, there are programs and curriculum that can be implemented to help address institutional historical racism, both within the San Ramon Valley and within our state. One of the things though, that I think is really important for people to understand about school board members is that our review of curriculum is really supposed to be content neutral. In the sense that if our outstanding teachers and education staff at the district office come to us with a recommendation for adding new curriculum or new courses that our students can take, that we are supposed to see, okay, we evaluate it for its ability to help students learn, not because it may write something in there that we disagree with or that we find problematic. I've watched with interest, the, I would say, a lot of media bombast about incidents of racism at one of our high schools. And, and one of the things that I think really gets lost whenever you see a media explosion about something like that is there are aggressions that kids face every day that you don't always think are obvious and that are hard to see. And sometimes even someone like I wouldn't necessarily be able to know. But you have to listen to kids and meet them where they are and find out what their needs are. And that is, I think, the number one thing a board member can do is listen and be a hearing board for those issues when they come up and then try to make them better through the powers that the board member has.
Okay, thank you. How do you plan to seek understanding when recommendations are made from the superintendent and or district management?
So one of the things that I'm really excited about, and I know one of our current trustees, Shelley Clark is, is doing this starting this year, is office hours. And this, this may be something really funny to believe, but Shelley and I served on the Facilities Oversight Committee together. And she was my vice chair. And I, I would like to just think it's a, one of those things where great minds think alike. When I talked to Shelley about my idea for office hours, she said, Jerome, that's what I'm going to start doing this fall. And, and I think it's really great. So one of the things I think that's important with office hours and, and you can structure them in different ways, if I'm fortunate enough to be elected, is allows you to hear from folks and not necessarily only students or only parents or only teachers, but just folks in the community who may have an interest or concern. And I think with that lens, you want to be able to evaluate what's being put in front of you when you're making a decision at a board meeting, knowing that perspective that you have. And of course, there are other ways to get it through public comment and all of that. But being able to sit down and devote the time at least once a month to hearing from the voters that elected you, I think can be a great way to talk to that. Additionally, you know, I would rely on the community groups that I get to talk to as part of this campaign. I would want to keep that door open. Our teachers, San Ramon Valley Democratic Club. Anyone who wants to sit down with me and have a conversation about issues that would help make our schools better, I want to listen to them. I, I don't have a high tolerance or patience for folks who want to take away resources from our schools though, which seems to be in vogue in certain other states.
Okay. So what do you believe to be the most pressing concerns facing this district?
So I, I touched on this a little bit, the issue of declining enrollment. I also have one of the things, and I noticed this with my own son. I, I think learning loss due to pandemic and distance learning is going to show itself in different ways in the years to come. It's not, and describing it just as learning loss isn't necessarily accurate either. I have two nieces and a nephew in school too. And one of the things that, you know, my sister tells me about the, my nephew is that, you know, he misses having multiple times of PE every day, which is what he had in distance learning. Now it's only back to once a day. So I think that is one challenge we have to look at and see how it impacts our students individually and at the macro level. One of the benefits though, I think we learned from the pandemic that I think would be nice to see if it could be done to expand our offerings in conjunction with our teaching staff is I think we learned that distance learning in certain contexts can be done well and helpfully. So taking those tools that we learned about in the pandemic and finding new ways to apply them in the non-pandemic setting, I think would be great. And then the final thing, I, as someone who served on our Facilities Oversight and Advisory Committee, I, I recognize we're coming to the end of that bond and there are plenty of schools that have real need. So one of the things I'm definitely interested in is having the discussion about what future bond projects may look like in the years to come to ensure that all of our school sites are equal, safe and nurturing and welcoming for our students and families.
Oh, wow. Well, thank you so much, Jerome.
Thank you, Brody.
For being here. And let's see, our next candidate. For being here. And let's see, our next candidate is Michelle Peterson. And she's also running for District One. Michelle is the co-leader of the Greater Mount Diablo or Greater Moms Demand Action for Gun Safety, which works at the national, state, and local level for common sense gun legislation. She served as PTA president of Alamo School from 2019 to 2022. She's endorsed by Assemblymember Rebecca Bauer-Cann and Danville Town Councilmember Noel Arnrich. Thank you, Michelle, for being here.
Thank you very much for having me. Since we're talking about endorsements, I'm also endorsed by Vice Mayor Store, Local Area, Local International Association Association of Firefighters 55, and by Sean Kumanyi, as well as Kevin Wilk and our City Council of Walnut Creek. Again, thank you very much. I come here as a former firefighter, professional mountain bike racer, and corporate event planner. But first and foremost, I am a mother and a wife. My son is 10 years old. He attends elementary school at the San Ramon Valley Unified School District. Alamo Elementary, that's my heart. My son has a learning disability, which I really appreciated Rachel saying. It does give us a unique lens into education and the struggles that these children experience. I have lived in Alamo for 16 years. I am passionate about public education, having attended public schools all of my life. I graduated with a BA from the UNC Chapel Hill. Go Tar Heels. I serve our community as a PTA leader, having served as president at my son's school for the last three years. I currently serve on the council of San Ramon Valley PTA as the Sister School Ambassador. And I am so lucky to be able to meet with Rachel and Susanna regularly and other great leaders in our community. I was, as you said, Brody, co-lead for the Greater Mount Diablo Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. I can no longer be that, in that position, unfortunately, but I have to give a huge shout out to my now leader of that organization, Nicole Sue. We work at the legislation, on common sense gun safety legislation at the state, national, and local level. And in this district, I took that knowledge promoting gun safety and was able to have the school safety plan for elementary schools changed. So our kids are going through the process where they do not have to go through active shooter drills anymore. When I was PTA president for the first year, a parent came up to me and said, "My child does not want to come back to school. She's crying and she's scared because she went through a lockdown drill." Second grade child did not want to go back to school, and that started my motivation to get this policy changed. And I'm very thankful to Christopher George at the district level and Emalyn Noel Stanwells and other people who helped to make this change happen to our safety plan. I also helped to secure $1.8 million in gun violence prevention to the city of Antioch. And part of my passion in this work is being an advocate for communities that are affected by gun violence. I am running for this position because I am the only candidate, number one, just want to say, who has had the experience being in our schools, working with teachers, working with parents, working with administrators. As PTA president, I myself directly faced what some of our guest speaker and what Rachel and what Susanna have had to face. As a PTA president in an elementary school, I was challenged daily for having something like Prison Club in our school, which is a an organization that brings in fourth and fifth graders and talks about love and unity. And it was blasted by a minority that is loud on our campus. I am running for this school board because I believe strongly that every student deserves a sense of belonging and safety to reach their full potential. I hold no higher political aspirations but to serve my community and our kids. And I echo greatly the statement of the guest speaker, "The hope is in the struggle." And I really hope that when you guys go to the ballot in November 8th, if you're in our area, you think about me. So, thank you. Oh, Brody, you're muted.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Michelle from the floor? If not, I'll go to our questions that we have. As a board member, what will be your top three budget priorities?
Well, you know, Jerome already alluded to them, but for me, the first, the number one issue is mental health and wellness. Are you, are you talking, I'm sorry, you're talking about budget priorities, and I apologize, I went straight to issues. For budget priorities. Part of my platform is advocating for mental health and wellness for our kids, and one of my budget priorities will be for elementary school counselors, intervention specialists, to continue to be ongoing and not only funded with one-time money. Right now, at the elementary school level, we have one elementary, one counselor, and that counselor will be gone with funding at the end of this budget allocation. Number two, what our donations pay for is what we should advocate for the state from state to this district for ensuring a balanced budget. Additional teachers to read a staffing ratio, instructional aides, clerical workers, textbooks and supplies, field trips, professional learning, technology, equipment, and supplies. Third, I will advocate for adequate base funding, base grant funding. We need a stable guaranteed funding base to ensure our students' needs are met. California gives less money to schools per pupil than any other schools. So the San Ramon Valley Unified School District does not get as much money from the state formula as other school districts, as our unduplicated count of high-needs students is very low, around 9%. Our students have similar needs as students throughout the state and the nation, and a large minority of district expenses are committed to people costs. Salaries and benefits are greater than 20% for, per 2021, and we need to attract and retain with the best salaries and benefits that we have. We are losing teachers at an exponential rate, and we need to figure out how do we recruit, how do we retain, and when we are considering our budget and considering negotiations with our partner, the San Ramon Valley Education Association, we need to figure these things out as we come to the table as Board of Trustees.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask you the same question. Do you think there's systemic racism in our school district? And if so, what is your plan to address it? Are there programs that could be added to the curriculum to strengthen student understanding of historic racism and the legal remedies that are in place to address it?
So I've spoken with students at Montevista High School, and I have a meeting arranged or working on getting a meeting arranged with students at San Ramon Valley. There's systemic racism, period, in education. The textbooks that we have looked at through, when all of us on the screen went to school, what were the pictures that you saw? Did you ever see a black boy or a brown boy in your textbooks, or a brown girl, or a white boy, or a Latina, or an Asian, or an Indian? No, we all saw what what I look like, white. And the majority of the people on the screen look like. So that is systemic racism, and until we can change those kinds of identities that we see in our textbooks and our, and as reflected in the curricula, we, we have inherent, inherent bias. In 2026, high schools will have to start offering ethnic studies, which I think is fantastic. These ethnic studies curriculum draw attention to four ethnic and racial groups whose history and stories have been traditionally overlooked. Blacks, Latinos, Native Americans, and Asian Americans. This curriculum will do that while encouraging schools to include discussions on the ethnic hierarchies and legacies of students in these communities. So this model curriculum also includes lesson plans for Sikh, Jewish, Arab, and Armenian Americans. And I think that this is so important, because if I'm elected to Board of Education trustee, this will be happening under my tenure. So I think it's incredible. I think it's an amazing advancement in the state of California and the curriculum set by the Department of Education, and I will do everything in my power to make sure that that kind of curriculum continues. And I also think it goes back to what I was saying in our textbooks and the images that we see. It's really important for kids to be seen and represented in their materials that they're seeing, in the teachers that are teaching them, in the clubs that support them. And we have to maintain and support those kind of resources for our kids in order them to succeed, feel safe, and reach their fullest potential, which is what every child in this district and the state of California deserves.
Thank you. We do have somewhat a question from attendees, Charlotte Gracer. Did I pronounce that correctly? Would you like to unmute yourself? Cecilia, can you help Charlotte unmute?
Hi, yeah, this is Charlotte Gracer. Michelle, I love the idea of having no more active shooter drills. But, I mean, we still have, you know, drills for earthquakes and fire and stuff like that, so I'm just wondering what would replace the active shooter drills for our kids and and how, what would that look like? Like, how do we prepare for that?
Yeah, first of all, I want to say I love your, I love your photo. Thank you. Yeah, so the, our school, I have to say, our district's already doing an incredible job, so they are, they do threat assessments. They've identified safe, soft access points. They've got interior locking doors. Every educator, every administrator, every staff person is trained on what needs to happen in the event of an active shooter. God forbid it ever happens. And we also have an incredible partnership with our community in our police department, our fire department, and the emergency responders that are trained to handle these things. So what I believe that is happening now in our district with active, the safe, active shooter drills is kids go through an earthquake drill, kids go through, and Rachel, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, they're not calling it active shooter, they're calling it a lockdown drill, and they're telling kids what needs to happen, but they don't have to go through the process. They don't have to hide, they don't have to role play. These are the things that we're causing. We are dealing with a nation of children from 15 to 24 years old. Suicide is the second leading cause of death for these kids. And from 10 to 12-year-olds, suicide has quadrupled since, for 20, the last 20 years. Our kids are struggling so much, having come out of COVID, dealing with learning loss, dealing with social emotional learning challenges, and to have this added stress and anxiety is not necessary. And we have to deal with it, and I think that our district is, is leading, one of the leading districts in this area that is actually taking these recommendations, and instead of putting kids through the paces, just doing it a much more educational way and not in such a reactive way.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So those were our San Ramon Valley Unified School District candidates. We're now going to have our County Board of Education candidate, Anayte Letona. I hope I said that name correctly, Anayte. For, she's running for the County Board of Education in District Four, which includes Danville and San Ramon. This is at the county level. Anayte is excited to advocate for equity and inclusion at the county level. Her years as a teacher, advocate, parent, and school volunteer have informed her perspective on how to best serve the people. She's already been endorsed by the California Teachers Association, the local teachers' unions, Servia, and the Labor Council. So, Anayte, thank you for being here. Thank you for waiting.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for having me. Hi, everyone. My name is Anayte Letona. I am a, I think I've been in San Ramon and this area for the last 24 years. I have three children who have all gone through San Ramon schools, two have graduated, one still, this is her senior year, actually. We're shepherding our, our youngest through her senior year at Cal High. I worked with adults with disabilities prior, just post-college. I did that for about almost 10 years, nine and a half years, where I did community service work. I did direct service. I also managed programs. And at that time, that was the time when developmental centers were closing, so the organization nonprofit that I worked for transitions adults from develops, develop, developmental centers into community-based living, jobs, and supported employment, or excuse me, supported living as well. And then I had three kids, and I stayed home for 12 years. And when I went back, I had to decide what I wanted to be when I grew up, and I decided I want to go back. I wanted to go back to the class, or go into the classroom. So I went back and got my credential, multiple subject, and education specialist, and I've been for the last nine years, just the beginning of my 10th year as an educational specialist in, I worked two years in San Ramon and then moved over to Pleasanton. So I've worked in segregated settings in SDC mild moderates, and now I am a middle school resource teacher for eighth grade. And I will tell you that all of that experience, lived experience, I also have two students who have dyslexia, one of them more impacted by it than the other, but it has informed their system, their systemic intervention, their systemic interactions with the district, with the system. And also, they are my children, and they look like me, and they speak like me, so they are Latina, and they are individuals, and they are not afraid to speak up, so their interactions have really been a lot of the conversations we've had in our house have been around equity and how that informs your perspective. And then I have my lived experience, professional and personal, as well, that have led me to be really an advocate for equity in our school systems, advocate, advocate for inclusion in our school systems, and an advocate for literacy as a social justice, civil rights issue. It's something that I've been working on, on my own. I also have educated myself in the last three to four years at pretty high levels. I teach foundations of reading at Cal State East Bay to pre-service teachers. And you can't do that unless you're willing to do the work around structured literacy and understanding the civil rights issues behind what it means to be a literate adult. They have to know that as a teacher. You have to know that as an education specialist. So I spend a lot of my time at the intersections of race, disability, and equity. And I felt that when this opportunity came up, actually through my husband, Patrick, that this was a forum where I could take the advocacy work that I've been doing at the site level and elevate it. I'm really focused on the inclusive opportunities for the programs that the county runs for students and adults with disabilities. I'm also interested in the literacy impacts for juvenile and adult offenders as it has a direct result to their rates of recidivism. And the programs that we have in our schools also feed the present-to-school pipeline, and those are direct line to literacy levels and identified disabilities within the system. So I feel like my experiences and my background have led me to a point where I feel like my voice can be useful in this arena, and I would be happy to serve in that role.
Thank you. Let me go to my questions for County Board of Education. See, what do you think are the most pressing budget issues facing the County Board of Education, and how do you intend to address them?
Well, just like with any board of education, the most pressing issues are funding, right, where you're getting your student funding, your state funding, and then your local funding. All of that is impacted, well, your, your local funding, the LCAP funding is impacted by the students who actually enroll and attend on a daily basis, and then the state funding, how it's decided, and then the local funding, where that comes from. So I think it it's just a, it it's a game that, I wouldn't say game, that's a poor choice of words. It's, it's a process that we have to understand is in flux and will always been flux. It's the nature of how we fund education. And I think what I would like to do is And I think what I would like to do is have a voice in there about how the money that we have to spend on that education is spent. So, I feel like the priorities, we need to look at broader base priorities instead of maintaining systems that may already be in place. Because what we know about education is that those systems are propping up racist and ableist systems. And we see those in the programs that we have, and not that they need to go away, but our, the programming needs to be intentional around being able to build lifelong learners in, in the county-based programs that we have.
Okay. What is the county's responsibility for teaching racial justice? And what does teaching racial justice mean and look like? And how would you, as a county board member, help to increase racial justice practices in the, in the county?
I think any school district has an affirmative responsibility to participate in racial and social justice work and build learners and activists and critical thinkers in our districts. They become adults who can critically think and apply that compassion and interactions to the world around them. I feel that what the voice that I could bring is that critical voice of understanding what it looks like to be in the system as a teacher, what it feels like to be in the system as a woman of color, and having raised three children of color in the system, and how that informs decision-making because those perspectives impact decisions only if they're heard. And I feel that that's a place where I can have a positive impact. I think in our school sites, the way it looks is building compassionate environments, having safe spaces where children can express opposing thoughts and have language around that. And also tolerance around who we are and what's considered different and what is not. And, and maybe embracing that we're all different, and that might be okay.
Okay, thank you. What is the relationship between the Board of Education and charter schools?
So, the County Board of Education oversees the the applications for new charter schools. So, any new charter, any new groups who want to begin a charter school have to go through the application process to the county. So, they have, the county has an oversight committee that looks through those applications, and then the board looks to them as a whole. They also, the existing counties, the charter schools in the county, they, the county board has direct oversight over those programs.
Okay. How does your County Board of Education provide for special needs students?
Well, the program, the county programs are actually primarily serving students with special needs. So, they have, I believe it's nine different schools that they serve throughout the county. That number could be wrong, and it's just sticking in my head right now. So, we provide services, the county itself provides services to adults with disabilities and down to children with disabilities. And I know that there are some issues that have come up regarding staff safety and what those sites, how those sites might be able to serve the population that they have in their system. And I think that those are issues, the conversations that we need to have around equity. Again, we run segregated programs, but we don't have a segregated society in that way, right? I worked on the adult end where we provided services to supported employment and independent living. So, that's what the adult side looks like, but we don't run our K through 12 programs that way. So, we have to have real conversations about what does that mean? And how do we support systems that honor each person despite or in spite of, or maybe because of their diagnosis, right? Their diagnosis doesn't limit them in life, but this, our systems do.
Thank you very much. Well, I'm, I think we're going to wind it up here, and I want to thank all the candidates for being here and speaking and taking our questions. And I hope to see you next month at our meeting. We're probably gonna try to do ballot measures and also have the county clerk recorders come speak. So, thank you for being here again. Thank you to all the candidates for coming here and sharing your time. It was so wonderful to hear you and listen to you and, and find out what, how, be informed voters for November 8th. Thank you.